And that's kind of the forte. In fact, I mean, the proclamation was kind of like being like, and it was working.
Do you have any?
Oh, good. You printed out a copy.
From last month?
She's very attentive to detail.
Is it agenda? Maybe agenda. You have your little thing?
No, that's why it was that one.
Okay. Because I always put it up on this. I just want to turn it into a hundred.
Yeah.
Not too much.
Yeah, thank you.
No, we're listening tonight, finally. We were just listening. Yeah. I like that. I'm just going to listen and do things.
I also think it's first, like a first meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
Good.
I might actually. The two comp plans are just overviews of what they're looking to do.
Good.
So maybe. The street reads will actually come back.
Maybe I will get dinner before.
I believe you will tonight.
I know, that's why.
No, you don't do that.
Stuff down the hat.
When Eli, been here since six.
Oh, my goodness.
So I'll let you open the meeting.
Okay, I will call to order the planning commission meeting of the city of Seidra Wully on four eighteen twenty twenty-three at six thirty-seven P M. Can everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, Commissioner Freiberger.
President.
Commissioner Cock online, I believe. Paul? Paul, put your, you're muted.
He's not muted.
You're now remuted. Why, I didn't hear him.
Oh, you're muted again.
So he's not muted now, but the audio's not coming through.
Oh, hang on, hang on a second, Paul. The audio's not working.
Can you hear him well?
I don't believe so.
Ask him if he can hear you, just not.
He can hear us, yes.
Ask Silas to try and help me.
Silas, can you unmute and can you hear us?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Where do you go?
So they can unmute, but we can't hear them. We have no audio on their side.
We'll get that fixed.
We'll get it fixed, that's fine. We're good. Commissioner Johnson absent. Commissioner Fournette is absent. Commissioner Maddox is here. Commissioner Fatisey is here. Commissioner Huggins is here. So at this point, Madam Mayor.
Right, but I'm wondering if maybe I should wait until John is here?
Okay, we can do that.
Okay.
He's going to fix the audio. So at this time, let's go over the consent agenda for March twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, meeting minutes. Hang on.
We were messing with the audio.
I knew you had something to do with it.
Right now.
Paul, can you say something?
I'm here.
Perfect. No, we didn't have any audio here, that's why I can now hear you. Prior, we couldn't hear anything you were saying. Silas, how about, can we test yours? I'm here, can you hear me? Perfect, yes, thank you. So we're going over the meeting minutes, so if anybody likes, would like to add something, just let us know. So Commissioner Freiberger, I know you had a couple of comments on this, would you like to?
Yes. First comment is the public hearing, item number one, its definition for work-live. So that work-live just needs to be swapped for those two mentions in there and everywhere else. Oh, in the next paragraph, and I think then it's fine, the rest of the, yeah.
Didn't we swap that around though, from work-live to live-work? I was confused on that.
It's always been live-work, yeah.
To work-live. Okay.
And it's correct after paragraph two, it's just.
I kind of used the terminology everybody was using.
Oh, I see. I was just looking at how it was put on the agenda, and so to match the agenda, it, yeah. And then Assistant Planner McGowan, her last name, in that second paragraph also, just a spelling.
Auto-correct. Call me McGovern.
And then down.
Or did you want to do the?
Go ahead, you can.
Okay. So on, down near the bottom, at the motion, that first motion failed zero to five.
That was that technical kind of thing we had to do at the end. We did vote on it, and then we went in and we modified it, and then we, I made another motion, and it carried five-nothing, and that would be that second line. So first one, oh-five, five-oh on the second.
Do we, do you think there needs to be an explanation of what happened there, or?
I don't think any more explanation was required, the fact that when we looked at it, it was just backwards, and then we made that modification. When Commissioner Fournette actually brought that up, we made that adjustment.
And then the final item was, then that second motion carried five to zero, rather than zero to five, so.
Does anyone have anything else, Pat?
No, and I wasn't present last time, so.
Any other commissioners online? Nope. Nope. So at this moment, I would like to have a motion to approve the meeting minutes of March twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. By the first, second.
I so move.
First by. Second.
With the proposed amendments.
With the amendments. Second by Commissioner Cock, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any further discussion? None. Motion carries with the following minor amendments that we put on. So at this point, Mayor Johnson.
Thank you, Commissioner Fatisey, I appreciate you giving me the time to, I actually share some news that I thought maybe had already been shared, and maybe some of you have already heard, but it's actually, for me, it's with a really heavy heart that we are going to be saying goodbye to Director John Coleman. He has been actually recruited by Anna Cordis. They identified his skills and his talents, and they have brought him on, and he assures me that this is the next best step in his career. I really don't know why Seidra Wully couldn't have been the next best step in his career, but that's the way it goes. But I, you know, I just wanted to, I didn't know that you didn't know, John had just shared that with me. The reason that I came forward was because I wanted to thank you and John, in particular John, for all the energy and hours and the creativity and, you know, putting up with the council and listening to the council, and, you know, if you get frustrated with this, you can imagine, John's very patient with us, and he's been absolutely wonderful. And he's been here seventeen years. Next Wednesday at council meeting, six o'clock, we have a little presentation, I have a little plaque that I give everybody, it always seems inadequate, what people put forth in their job, but I have one for John, and I'm going to be presenting it, so if you want to come next Wednesday night, council meeting, it'll be within the first five, ten minutes of the meeting, so, but just to honor him. And, you know, I don't know if you want to share any words with him tonight or not, I don't know, that's up to you, but that's, that's what I wanted to say. I just wanted to thank John for the years that he's been here, the eight years that I've had the opportunity to work with him. You may not know this, but when I was sitting on council, there was a possibility that he was going to be hired on up in Linden, and that didn't transpire, and that was their loss, our win, but in this situation now, it's, it's our loss and Anna Cordis' win. So, yeah, so congratulations, John, thank you so much, thank you to your team, your staff, you've got a really great staff, and we wish you well.
Thank you.
So, that's all I had to say.
Just to add into that, you are going to be missed. I get how tough a job this is, and you've just been outstanding, and you are going to be missed. So, anyway, I wish you the best, but I'm a little bit selfish, just like the mayor is, you will be missed, absolutely. Anyway, Anna Cordis has every single thing to gain. It's, this is a tough job, it really is, people don't get the level of detail that is required in a position like this, and.
The nuances.
The nuances, the devil is in the detail.
Yeah.
And you've done such a great job here in helping us guide this city in, I think, a really good direction, that without people like you, now, stuff like this does not get done, seriously.
Well, it's been an honor, and I'm leaving you in good hands. We've got a great staff built around here, and we will be looking for a permanent director, so we haven't quite started that recruiting process yet, but.
By the end of the week, we'll have it out by the end of the week.
Yeah.
Because we need to do it like yesterday, but we're going to do it. And there'll be an interim who'll be filling in, and, but also Nicole has done an absolutely marvelous job, and she'll be able to lead you through if there's nobody here next month for planning commission.
Don't worry, we know that, we're okay.
But Katie, so, but did you want to share anything, John? But I just, I just wanted to, I felt it was really important to honor him, both here and in senior management meeting and also in council, so.
Totally agree.
Yeah, so.
I won't be able to be there next Wednesday, but I also want to thank you for all the years you've put in here with us, because you always make the meetings interesting, you always have the information we need, you always go find it if we don't have it, and I've really appreciated that, and we'd had three very nice people be planner before you, but they were bing, 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 and it's nice to have had those years of stability and, and a good hand at the tiller, very much appreciated, John. Thank you.
When I heard, I said, no. I don't want to work with another planner, but, but, yeah, I have really appreciated working with you over the past few years.
I was excited when Linden passed, quite frankly, I was like, okay.
Well, we could talk more about that, we've got stuff on the agenda.
We do.
Thank you for the kind words, Mayor.
Oh, my gosh, thank you, John.
Do you want to plug tomorrow night's thing?
Yes.
Yeah, get that on, yeah.
Yeah, so for those of you who maybe weren't here or haven't heard about it, or didn't come in when Peter was here, we are going to, at the community center tomorrow night from six to nine o'clock, have an event called For the Love of Seidra Wully, and it is coming together and hearing maybe what our vision is going to be, but more than that, kind of touching base with the public and figuring out what it is you want to see happen here in Seidra Wully, any kind of art, or murals, or changes, or, you know, maybe what you want to honor or have remembered, you know, I think it's wide open, but would love to have you come, we're feeding people pizza.
Wow.
So, you know, yeah, there's always, nobody bypasses a pizza that I know of.
Depends on where it's coming from.
So, anyway, anyway, we'd love to see you come, and if you cannot come, and if you know of individuals who may, maybe somebody at the school or something like that, please encourage them to come. So, community center, six to nine.
Okay. So this is, this is going to be a lively event, not a, like a formal council meeting, it's a lively event. The city is put aside, working on putting aside some money to do projects throughout the community, to show people's love for the community. So tomorrow will be a brainstorming session led by Peter Kagiyama.
Very interactive.
And he's, he's an expert in this issue of connecting people back to their cities, like identifying what people love about their city and getting people reinvigorated about their city and making those connections between the people, and then, and the manifestation in public and in forms of art, or any other ways that people can identify with their city that spreads some joy and love for their community.
And you're not saying that we're boring here as far as our meetings?
I didn't say boring, I said formal.
Yeah, I saw that, five hundred bucks.
Five hundred, there's a five hundred, that will be given out tomorrow night.
Yeah.
But more than that, there'll be other grants too, that people can apply for, and we'll learn more about that tomorrow night.
Yeah, I thought it was a great idea, I put it right in my calendar, yeah.
All right.
Thank you for the plug.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I knew something was up when I received the meeting minutes with her name on it, not yours, I thought you might have been out of town or something.
The meeting minutes?
Yeah, well, not the meeting minutes, the agenda and the whole package, the whole meeting package.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Very astutely paying attention to the clues. So my last day will be next Friday.
Oh.
So this will be my last planning commission meeting, so to that end, I'm going to let Nicole do all the talking.
You know, when I, when I looked at the agenda tonight, I was, I was like, hey, this is great, I just got to sit and listen tonight. Okay, with that, moving on, general public comments section. So prior to opening the general public comments section, I like to read in the guidelines, if anyone wishes to speak, please limit comments to three minutes or less. Comments may also be submitted via email or mail ahead of this all-scheduled monthly planning commission meetings, and read into the record at that time. So if you would like to speak, please state your name and address, or any group or organization you represent. So with that, I will open the general public comments section at six fifty-two P M.
And I will put a clarification on that, if there's anybody online that is here, like, that is one of the applicants, like, you can talk about your proj, well, you will be given time to talk about your proposal during, when we get to that agenda item, so you don't need to come to the public comment to talk about, you know, your proj, your proposal, that's on the agenda, you'll have that opportunity.
I'm going to put that as part of my, because you're right, there could be some confusion, I mean.
So if there's anybody that's on the, wants to speak about anything besides what's their own project, now's the time.
Okay, so with that, do we have any emails or mail to be read into the record?
We do not.
Okay. Do we have any audience members wishing to speak? We do not, unless Casper would like to, the friendly ghost. Do we have any online audience members wishing to speak? I see a Liz P T up there, Liz, would you like to say something, or?
One of the applicants.
Oh, you're one of the applicants. So, yeah, you'll have a different time to speak specific to that application, and that's not tonight, okay?
No, it's in like a few seconds.
Okay, it's in a few seconds, so how would that be, in a few seconds?
Because hers is the first project on the agenda.
Okay, I don't have a public hearing on that, I just have a.
Public hearing, she's the applicant.
Okay. I just don't have anything on new business that says the applicant's going to speak, but that's fine, too.
I, I don't have to say anything tonight.
No, 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 that's fine, I'm just, I always go by what's on the agenda, and typically if an applicant has something to add in, and I'm fine with that, by the way, it just typically appears on that, so I'm just being, just basically reading off of the sheet here, so, okay.
So most, most projects are not applicant, you know, there's not an applicant involved, but occasionally there are, such as rezone requests for personal, you know, for someone's personal property, so it's a little bit outside of the normal way of doing it, but it's perfectly appropriate to have whoever's applied to have the opportunity to speak.
So prior to moving on, I will close the open public comments section at six fifty-five P M. And moving on to the agenda, there is no public hearing scheduled for tonight, there is no unfinished business on the agenda tonight, and now on to new business. So the first item is C P A dash one dash twenty-three dash twenty twenty-three Comprehensive Plan Amendments, including two rezone requests. The first one is the Peterson rezone request, number R Z dash zero, the dash two zero two three dash zero zero one, request to change the zoning designation of roughly two-point-five-three acres parcel from R five to residential seven. The second one is the Benson rezone request, R Z dash two oh two three dash zero zero four, request to change the zoning designation of a roughly point-eight-five acre parcel of land from residential seven to residential fifteen. And the mind, and the final one is possible amendments to chapter ten forty-four S W M C to update sidewalk cafe regulations and to add regulations for streeteries, and amendments to chapter seventeen oh four to define streetery. So with that, I, I just have a Liz P T, I don't know your name, which particular rezone request would you like to comment on?
I, I'm the, I'm the first one, I'm the two-point-five-three acres.
The Peterson.
My name is Liz Peterson or Elizabeth Peterson.
Okay.
I'm the, I'm the R five to R seven.
Okay.
So we usually start with staff and.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I can give an overview of the rezone.
Okay.
Kind of discuss the property, and then she can fill in any blanks that she fills.
Incorporate her commentary into the open, so, just a little.
Yeah, for sure.
So, have at it.
Start with an overview, okay, so let's start with the rezone for Ms. Peterson, we're, we've got a request here to change the zoning designation of a two-point-five-three acre parcel of land from the current residential five zoning to residential seven. So the purpose of this meeting today is just to kind of do an overview of the rezone, introduce it, introduce the property, just kind of discuss what's proposed here, so, so this is, this property is located at eleven-twenty-two State Street, and it is the, let's see, Eastern Most Property, along State Street, butts right up to the city limit line. It's got R seven zoning all along the western property line, and so, let's see, currently the property has a single-family home, a small barn, and a shed on site, and the remainder of the property has been used as open pasture land since as far back as nineteen thirty-seven, that's what the Skagit County Property Search, I was looking at aerial images of the property over the past years, and it's, it's been pasture land for quite some time. At this time, it's not known whether critical areas exist, we haven't had any critical areas report done on this property to date, so that will come in later time as development applications are applied for, but for now, we don't know, let's see, surrounding properties to the west, there's a fourteen-unit apartment complex, oh, sorry, start that again, to the west, there are single-family homes, to the north, there is a fourteen-unit apartment complex, there's single-family homes to the south, and single-family homes and open pasture land to the east. So what Liz has proposed here is to change it from R five to R seven, currently under the R five zoning, she's basically limited to single-family homes at six thousand square feet, minimum lot size, so if she were to change it to R seven, she would be allowed the single-family homes on smaller lots of four thousand eight hundred square feet, and she would also be allowed to do duplexes, there's some specific requirements for those, you have to have at least nine thousand square feet, minimum lot size, a few other things as well, but it would give her the ability to kind of get more density in there.
I knew the number, yeah, it's opposite.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. Seven will give you the six thousand.
Yeah, yeah, so R seven will give you the six thousand, so instead of the eight thousand four hundred that the R five zone allows, sorry about that.
And our duplex on that zone is, they're bigger lots, right, they're, you're not going to put a duplex on a six thousand, a duplex, what's our minimum on that, nine?
Nine thousand.
Something, yeah.
Yeah, so increasing the allowable density is what she's looking for here, and, yeah, that's pretty good overview. At this point, Liz, if there's anything, any gaps you'd like to fill in here, now's a good time to do so.
Well, well, really, it makes sense, I mean, we're R, we're R seven on the other side, and all around us, it really won't change, there might be two additional houses, which would be nice, because then those people would be inside the city limits and have greater access to, to, you know, stuff to go on that goes on in Seidra Wully, but really, it just makes sense for the property, there really aren't any properties this size still inside the city limits that aren't built on, and it just, it just makes sense to have it be R seven, one or R seven on the other side, so, that's, that's really, it's like, it's not going to change the landscape a lot, it will just give us two additional, about two additional lots, so probably about ten, ten houses, I believe, with the other, the main house that we live in will be staying.
And I'd like to mention, I did do the math for this, and under the current R five zoning, she can get about eight to ten houses, if it were approved to go to the R seven zoning, she's, would be able to get between ten and fifteen, so.
But if you draw it out, we can't, we can't really get that, get that much, we're going to keep about a half an acre with the house, we do have GeoTech scheduled, but I, I grew up in Seidra Wully, even though we were in Malvern and for a number of years, and we actually lived down the road from here about thirty years ago, and this is Old River Bottom, so there shouldn't be any, any problems with any kind of wetlands or anything on the property.
At that particular point, that's out of all of our control, right? I, you know, I deal with a lot of land, it's going to be what it's going to be, is what it comes down to at the end of the day, so. Well, we're going to see you at the public hearing anyway, when this gets scheduled, you know, next month or so, so we'll, we'll have a lot more data at that particular point.
Yeah.
Okay. Moving on.
So, moving on to the Benson rezone request, so this one is a point-eight-five acre parcel of land, so we're on four oh six Ball Street, so this one's currently zoned residential, and they're asking for a zoning change to go to R fifteen, residential fifteen zoning. The idea there is they are looking to, they're looking to do a multi-family development here, so, let's see. Sorry, so the property right now, as it is, is currently undeveloped, there's quite a bit of vegetation on there, it's unknown whether or not critical areas exist on site, similarly with Ms. Peterson, so there haven't been any critical areas reports done on this property. Looking at the Skagit County, I'm. Looking at the Skagit County map, um, it looks like there was at one point a single-family residence back in nineteen sixty-nine.
I'm sorry, Nicole, could, could you tell me one more time where it's located?
It's at four oh six Ball Street.
Four oh six Ball, okay, thank you.
Yeah. So it looks like there was a single-family house on there nineteen sixty-nine, around then. In two thousand and five, it was demolished around that time period. This is just looking at aerial images. So I don't have the actual, any permits or anything. So, but since then, since two thousand and five, it's sat undeveloped with tree coverage, bushes, grass, that sort of thing. So, um, then uses surrounding the area. We've got to the north, there's a thirty-unit apartment complex. A church to the south, single-family homes to the east and west. You'll see that the adjacent zoning directly to the north is R fifteen. So they're asking for that R fifteen there, kind of match up with the apartment complex that's to the north there. They've said that they are looking to provide low-income housing. They're looking for, um, let's see, what was the number of units? They want to do two twelve-unit multifamily buildings here. And currently under the R seven zoning, they'd only be able to get about four to five housing use, housing units on there. So. Oh, the, the property is about 0.85 acres in size.
So they're not going to get two twelve units?
No, no way. Yeah.
Did we do the map on that?
Yeah, fifteen units per acre. Be able to get twelve max.
Twelve max.
Yeah, twelve max.
Yeah.
Yeah, when you said that, I was like, there's, there's no way. So it's not big enough. That'll be a discussion for another day. You know, I'm just looking at that aerial. It's kind of weird where you have the two R fifteens directly next to it. And I wasn't here when that zoning went in. And then you just have that one little piece that they're proposing that, uh, right? I mean, it's, it's like, you would think it'd be contiguous on how we did that zone there. It's just like it comes on out and, or they could have been rezones on those properties next to it.
Yeah. Maybe I misspoke. I think they were trying to do two six-unit buildings. I had twelve units in my mind, but, so. But twelve units max.
It's just a zone, it's, it's a zoning change to R fifteen and looking at more apartments. So that's a discussion for a different day.
There you have it.
Anybody have any questions regarding the rezone that we're going to see a lot more of in the next couple of months? Because I'd rather talk about streeteries when we're done.
I don't have anything today.
Silas, Paul, anything?
No.
I know Steph is not making a recommendation tonight, but I did have a question. Thinking back to the last time we had rezone requests come to us. Since there is adjacent R fifteen for this second one and R seven for the first proposal, neither of these would be considered spot zones, correct?
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, it's the first thing I looked at, too. No, because you're right, the property's right next to it or.
And I know, I know another concern that had come up previously was the percentages of, um, all of the different zones and, and the comp plan, but of course, that, that update is coming around again. And I believe I read in here some justification on the part of the applicants, I believe both of them, about looking at the data from the last go-around with Cedar Willie having a shortfall of housing, which I thought was interesting.
I was happy to see how well the applicants had done their research in the comprehensive plan, looking at our actual numbers and things like that, trying to fill in those gaps in the low-income housing department. So it's cool to see. But, yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to take a look at that.
So the plan is to have public hearings at the next meeting.
Okay.
For both of these. And I don't, it'll be up to the planning commission if they want to have any further meetings. But it could be as soon as, you know, he could make a recommendation next planning commission meeting if you so choose.
I don't see anything here earth-shaking and going R five to sevens and in this particular case on even on the fifteen, directly next to it is the exact same thing. We're not talking this massive density changes on really anything. And, you know, we have some really nice R seven neighborhoods, too. I mean, and, you know, we, we are under, you know, just like any other community to, you know, improve density in five to seven, it isn't anything that's, like a five to a fifteen, that's a different deal on two acres. But not in this particular case. But we'll wait for that hearing and get all that stuff out of it and everybody to have their say on top of it.
Sounds good.
Possible amendments for streeteries. Let's talk about that.
Closing the agenda item one and moving on to agenda item two?
Yes.
And thank you, Liz, for being here.
Well, we'll see you next month either way, and you'll know more at, at that time as well. Because sometimes it doesn't look like a wetland, then somebody does a dirt sample and it is.
We won't be doing any wetland studies in, before the rezone.
Well, they're going to need to do it anyway. That would affect the density at the end of the day.
We have geotech coming out, so they, I will have an answer on that within the next two weeks, actually.
I get it. I'm just saying, you know, the seven will allow for X, but by the time you actually take a look at the site, you might have other ideas. That's all I meant. But, yeah, I, I totally get what you're saying. Okay, item number two. Can we move on to item number two?
Absolutely. Okay, so this one is for the allowance of permanent sidewalk, um, or permanent, we're calling them streeteries. So another word for these is parklets. So currently, permanent sidewalk cafes are in allowed use in the central business district. These are specifically, um, gathering spaces on the sidewalk in front of a business in the central business district. There are certain, um, criteria and regulations for these already in the code. However, permanent streeteries were not included with that. So this is to kind of, um, this is in an effort to provide downtown business owners with an additional option for accommodating additional customers. Create a more lively downtown environment for people, you know, walking the streets. They'll see those parklets and get excited to come and eat. So, um, so back in twenty twelve, twenty thirteen, the council approved temporary ordinances that allowed the use of sidewalks and public parking spaces in front of restaurants in the CBD for private dining areas. Those were just temporary ordinances, and once they expired, um, you know, the, um, the, let's see, the Business Development Committee kind of discussed that those had been really positive for those downtown business owners. They got a lot of, you know, people in from the streets, a lot of business from those, and it made downtown just a really vibrant place. We had, um, good reviews from people just in the public as well. So they kept the, um, the permanent sidewalk cafes because of that. In twenty fourteen, that was when they were permanently allowed. So later years, we had-
What were permanently allowed?
Sidewalk cafes in twenty fourteen. So, um, not parklets, yeah. Twenty fourteen, sidewalk cafes, not parklets. In twenty twenty, we had the COVID pandemic, so we kind of looked at this again. So we did an allowance for temporary outdoor dining areas. So they could, so business owners could, um, and, um, open up temporary sidewalk cafes and parklets as well, temporary. Those were intended to allow people to have those additional customers because of the indoor occupancy requirements. You can only have so many people inside. So we thought, okay, we'll just have them outside. So that way they're not losing business and they still are able to, uh, run things how they normally would. So the intent was for those to, for those temporary, um, permits, you know, those to go away once the COVID restrictions were lifted. Those have been since lifted, but we do have at least one that I know of, the Magnolia Parklet still exists. But, you know, they're interested in keeping it still. They've had a lot of, similar to the sidewalk cafes thing. They're kind of excited about, you know, we have a lot of people seeing that and coming and doing business here. So they want to keep that. So we're looking at, you know, we've got public support still evident. There is some concern about the use of the parking spaces in the public, you know, on street parking downtown. So we've put some limitations in for the size, um, the number of parking spaces you can take up. So I think that this does well in, um, providing those limitations and not, it's not an excessive amount of parking that would be reduced. And, um, so these amendments in here are, excuse me. These amendments are, um, going to improve and clarify the sidewalk cafe, the existing permanent sidewalk cafe regulations to kind of match up with what we've proposed, with the regulations for these permanent streeteries. We're adding a definition for streetery. And, yeah, the new regulations kind of, they discuss the intent for these. The regulations for location and use, specifically, they have to be used as, you know, a gathering space or a dining area specific to the associated business. They have to be located in front, directly in front of the business. They can't exceed the width of the business frontage. Construction requirements, kind of, they include some provision for ADA accessibility. You have to have your ramp, non-slip surface, those kinds of things. You can't take up ADA parking spaces. Public safety, there's regulations for how the barrier facing the public street is supposed to be constructed. Right-of-way use and access, you know, we've got, um, like, street sweepers and things like that. You need to be able to have these things easily removed. So that way, when your street sweepers are going by, or maybe a snowplow or something like that, it's not going to be in the way. Making sure it's not going to be covering utility lines, those sorts of things.
Just to clarify, there's no intention to move these for street sweepers or snowplows. But there are provisions in here to make sure that the owners are maintaining because the street trees and snowplows can't get by.
And this is only in the CBD, so we're not, yeah.
No, it doesn't say anything about CBD.
It doesn't? I'm looking at the sidewalk cafes, allowing the use of, in, in the central business district excluding, is it me? Intent, allowing the use of public sidewalks in front of a business in the central business district excluding state routes. And there aren't any state routes in the, in the central business district? So we say in mixed commercial, not CBD, I mean.
No, well, you can do whatever you want.
I think it makes sense in the CBD.
The way I wrote it was intended, intended just to be in the CBD.
Okay.
We can change that if we need to, but.
I like the CBD myself, but.
It seemed like it mirrored what we already have in place for sidewalk cafes pretty closely.
Yeah. Yeah, so going on, it kind of clarifies maintenance responsibilities. You know, the owner needs to make sure that they're sweeping and maintaining and making sure everything's closed up and your chairs aren't all over the place outside after, you know, things like that. The Washington State Liquor and Cannabis Board, um, policy, they need to be in conformance with that. I've also made sure to update the previous, um, thing for the sidewalk cafes because it's no longer called the Washington State Liquor Control Board. It's the Washington State Liquor and Cannabis Board now, so just a little update there. Insurance and liability and the required permitting for that, since it's all kind of discussed in the amendments. So that's a good overview. Shall we discuss?
Yeah, these, these are good items, by the way, in the discussion. You know, I've seen other jurisdictions, what they're doing is if somebody wants a streetery or the external service area, they, they charge them a permit fee, I want to say. I forget who it was. It was like four hundred bucks just to even have the opportunity to do that. We don't have anything built in here, and I'm thinking we might. I mean, you know, that, that, that seems to me that there's going to be extra city resources to, that would need to be involved, you know, when you're, because basically you're expanding the dining area, right? So.
So right now, all you need to permit this would be a right-of-way permit.
Yeah.
And that's it.
Kind of curious if other jurisdictions are also doing this because I've noticed same thing in, in other places I've been, that the sidewalk things are not going away now that the restrictions have been lifted. And, and they're obviously in the right-of-way. It's very easy to tell anytime they're in the central business district.
Bellingham, Bothell, I can think of a bunch of them, yeah, especially Bellingham. Yeah, yeah. Right over Holly. Right, yeah.
Yeah. I wonder if the, if their thing for making the, like, on the weekend, you can park for free sort of thing, if that might be part of why. Because a lot of their parklets are taking up the, on street parking.
But you know what's interesting about Cedar Willie? If you, if you go behind the Willie Market where all the public parking is, there is always a ton of space available. It's just that people don't like to walk, I think. That's my own observation.
I, I had two questions on this. At some point, will there be any kind of a poll of central business owners to see if they like the idea? Or is that handled in the public meeting part of it? And the second is, you know, we have really dark afternoons and dark days. And I'd hate to have somebody run into one of those full of people. Is there any kind of reflective signage or anything that could be, that could make it safer? You know, I'm seeing a lot more people putting up those, I don't know what they're called, polls. And I guess you can't do it here because it's a temporary thing. But I just worry about somebody losing control and instead of running, you know, into a building that's full of, you know, it's got glass walls into this thing protected by a tent. And you could have multiple injuries. That's just a concern for me.
I would think we'd want, uh, you know, police and fire to maybe make a comment on, on something like that because they're the ones that would be responding to an incident like that. But, but, yeah, Paul, you're absolutely right. I mean, because basically you're in a parking spot, an extension to that. And, you know, things happen. Yeah, you're absolutely right. Somebody hit the gas pedal instead of the brake. I mean, it happens all the time. So.
Or, or even somebody with less than nice motives. When I worked at Western Washington University in big areas, we put up poles everywhere so cars couldn't get onto them.
Because I'm thinking Magnolia is the only real example that we have right now, but I think did a great job. I mean, you know, it's.
It's been a while since I've been to downtown Anacortes, but they had similar thing, uh, pretty far out into the, well, in the parking area.
I like the concept. I think it helps the businesses. But I just, I worry a little bit about safety and, um, whether the other business owners will get peeved by spaces taken away. I don't know. Maybe they're okay with it.
I would say anything that generates more traffic into the CBD, people typically wander around, right? So it's not like you're just going to sit in that one spot, especially in the summertime. You see people coming from all over, you know, coming into town just to check it on out. So anything that drives traffic into the CBD, I don't think is a negative thing. How about you, Silas? How do you feel about something like that? Because you're pretty proactive on those types of concepts.
Uh, I love it. I think that it's great getting people out onto the street and giving businesses a different option. Is great and should be encouraged any way we can.
Hot down to you.
Yeah, I, I total, I love these things, whenever, in fact, when we travel, this is the kind of places we, we are gravitate to, so. Either the roll-up door places like, like the bullpen is or the, or the street sidewalk places. So yeah, I'm, I'm totally on board and I, I think there are lots of, my mind was turning about safety things there, so. I mean, there's ballards you can roll out that will help with those situations, but as we well know that if somebody steps on the gas, they're. They're, they can go right through the side of a, even a brick front, brick veneer front building very, very easily. But, but ballards are a good way that, you know, if they just sit there, or big planters, heavy planters. That's probably my main concern too, so, is integrated.
Yeah, that's what we, that's what we did all around Western.
Yeah, right now, how it reads is for the barrier bit, streetery shall be enclosed on the three sides, not adjacent to the curb. With railing or another approved barrier of at least forty-two inches in height. Barriers may include but are not limited to railings, planters and backs of attached seating, i.e. benches. So we can certainly beef that up, like to get fire and police in on see what they think.
Yeah, they're the experts.
Like certain things are minimal requirements, yeah.
We can ask the police how many cars get hit downtown and see if there actually is a risk. I'd hate to require that they put, you know.
Yeah.
Bolt metal built barriers around these things, I mean, it's not a problem.
Well, well, one of the, you know, just having something so they're more visible, I think would be a big help because it's so dark.
Just some reflectors or something like that.
Even planters, I mean, you know, you can do a lot of things that look more tasteful.
I was going to say, I think planters are the, the big thing because, because not only are they vis- visual, but they are also.
A barrier.
They're also heavy because they have dirt and stuff in them and, and it kind of does both, both jobs versus. If you, signs are okay, but if you do signs too much, then it's just, it's just a lot of visual, more visual noise. Which could even add to the problem.
Right, distracting, right, exactly.
Distracting whereas plants are calming and, and whatnot, so I, I think planters are the, are the, the big deal there for you.
Well, the Magnolia tent or whatever you call it, I think is blue, am I right? But it's, you know, but you can see it. I, I would just be concerned about somebody who did tending that was black or. Dark gray or something like that.
Most of the ones I've seen are like the white or. I didn't know.
Should we say something like tents aren't allowed? Because first of all, they get pretty ratty. Our, our temporary requirements were kind of discouraged tents but allowed umbrellas. So if you have an open space, like if you, if you have one that's not enclosed with a roof like Magnolia is, is. I don't, I don't think you want to allow somebody to put a ten-by-ten tents up there that just get kind of windblown and ratty. Or those Costco carport things like. I would discourage those.
But there's some really nice looking custom tenting you could do to actually, from an architectural standpoint, make it look a little bit more decorative. I mean, there's places that make all custom stuff. I'm not talking about the Costco kind or the Dick's Sporting kind, but.
I think you want to address it. And I don't see it in here.
So, so what's kind of, I'm getting the sense is being kind of envisioned is something slightly more permanent. It would still be movable and not attached, obviously, to the ground, but an actual structure. So, and even, even if the structure was wood or whatever, the cover couldn't be.
I think it's kind of how we do our requirements for awnings and that sort of.
Very similar, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because if you make it out of the right kind of material and if you're concerned about safety, that wouldn't so much be the roof as the sides that people would be.
And it's times outside that you want pure sun, you don't even want anything on top of you. So I can see in the winter time or right now, if you even call this the spring. There's a, there's a need for all types of, you know, coverage on top of you. It's something that definitely we want to think about, but yeah, we have some decent code already in place for awnings and things like that that are kind of similar, yeah, sure.
I, I'm kind of curious where the, the idea of streeteries kind of originated. Was it something other cities are looking into or it just kind of was a logical follow-through to address. These structures not being removed at the end of the covid pandemic.
It existed long before covid.
Yeah, yeah, Europe is filled with them, you go to any major European city.
Here in town, at least with like Magnolia, I mean, I noticed that one hadn't gone away.
We, we allowed them first in two thousand twelve, so um Coconut Kennies had one, had this one in two thousand.
Well, sidewalk cafes, but actually in the streets.
Coconut Kennies had one and.
In the street.
The. The, um, there was a barbecue place that was in the, where Magnolia is now.
Okay, so this is basically a continuation of the temporary and making this long-term is why.
So those were, those were ones that were permitted back in two thousand twelve under our, under our rules that were allowed them. They were, those rules sunsetted, they weren't the temporary covid kind, but they were rules that were in place for two or three years.
Okay, which were mentioned in here.
And then we let it sunset because those places, those businesses removed them and then didn't put them back, so we just let it sunset.
That was that temporary ordinance that was mentioned here, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's just kind of a logical follow-through on that, okay? Because I, I would be kind of interested, but it may be too, too recent. If, if anybody has done anything in other jurisdictions and if they've addressed that, but it might be difficult to find that.
Bellingham has them, Bothell has them, Bellingham is actually right next door and.
Because I know, at least with the pandemic, which it sounds like this is kind of a separate thing. Those things oftentimes were handled under a right-of-way permit that was kind of a temporary measure. That was supposed to be renewed every year. Whether or not that happened is a different story. But I believe that's how it was handled in La Conner and also in Mount Vernon.
No, I'm thinking in Mount Vernon on First Street, you got a bunch of places that there's outdoor seating and it's great because I've sat outside much.
And those are right-of-way permits.
Yeah, yeah, so. But that brings up another question, would this be until a new owner comes in? How would, would this permit have an expiration? Would it have to be renewed every year? We don't really address that.
Good question.
It would just be allowed, just like once you apply for a sidewalk dining cafe, you don't have to. Remove it every year.
Okay, so even if the business changed owners, it would still be, okay.
I mean, we could probably build something in that says it needs to be revisited or re-upped every certain amount of time. Every year or two or three.
If staff doesn't think it's necessary, I just wanted to ask the question.
You know, the businesses might want to put something on there that's like unique to their own business, right? So when you have a new business owner come in and they're taking over, you know, make sure that your stuff reflects your own business, right? So we kind of, I'll take a look at things that we have, like for our design standards and signage requirements too, because.
Back to that, maybe it might be a good idea to have like an annual inspection for fire, just something really minor to make sure that that structure hasn't been modified. For power and all different types of things, that somebody goes in there before the busy season gets and takes a double, double eye on it.
Fire already does, fire, they already do inspections at all the businesses.
So that would include, so they, we would incorporate that inspection of anything exterior to the building, you would think? Is that how the code's written now?
If they see something they don't like, they'll, they'll point it out.
I'm just saying as a matter of practice.
Yeah.
Put something in code for that.
I don't think it matters where it is, if they see it and they think it's a fire problem, they're going to say something, yeah.
I have one question, you had a, what's IBC standards?
International Building Code.
Okay. I thought you meant that, but I, I didn't think of that with. With an external like, kind of basically a temporary structure, it's not permanent, it could be moved. As far as maintenance responsibilities, exactly what do you have in mind with something like that?
One second, so I was looking for IBC.
I'm just looking at the discussion stuff, like maintenance responsibilities, that's always a good one, it's like, we should have some minimal standards on.
Section E in the streeteries bit, so.
Okay.
The first one is the business owner is responsible for maintaining the safety and physical upkeep of the streetery structure. The business owner is responsible for sweeping the streetery inside and around the streetery dining area. Business owner is responsible for keeping the curb free of debris that might interfere with stormwater conveyance or other street-side utilities or amenities. Street sweeping machinery will be unable to operate normally around streeteries. The business owner is responsible for sweeping the street within twenty feet laterally from the streetery. And chairs must be removed or secured by close of business each day. Tables must be permanently affixed, removed or secured by close of business each day.
They would want to do that anyway. Reminds me of like the Safeway carts you see all over the place.
My, my wife went to Fred Meyer the other day and, and her, it malfunctioned, but her cart actually locked up all four wheels. Because they have some kind of a thing that goes off and locks the wheels on their carts so that the homeless people can't. Homeless people can't walk off with them and nobody can walk off with them.
That is so long, those things cost a lot of money and I'm surprised they haven't done something like that in the longest time.
Or tracking, some kind of tracking thing. He apologized profusely, my wife was like, like trying to drag it and the wheels wouldn't roll and then she saw the guy that was collecting the carts and said, what's wrong with your cart? It was working in the store, but now suddenly it quit working. And he says, oh, it malfunctioned, sorry, we'll.
Well, it's the same technology as the electric fence for dogs, right? Just attach the, the zapper to the wheels. Does anybody have anything else on the discussion items? That was Paul. Anyone here?
I'm good.
Okay.
I did have a quick comment, but it could probably be saved for the next round. But I just noticed since it looked like the sidewalk cafes had been updated from dining areas to cafes. Those um replace, word replacements there in section E that hadn't been done, so just thought I'd mention that.
There are all these companies out there now that are building tiny homes on, you know, that are on trailers. And I, I'm waiting for somebody to come up with, with the, with these streetery things so that instead of having to dismantle them. They can just pump the tires back up and drive them around and park them, you know, in a garage or cover them with a tarp someplace.
That makes a lot of sense, too.
Saying. Yeah, I, I'm surprised somebody hasn't already cornered that market.
But that makes a practical idea too, because during the really yicky time of year, I mean, Metcalf, we get buried in snow. Just to pull that stuff off and put it in a safe place before.
Well, nobody's going to eat out anyway, but, but instead of having to take it apart, you maybe just, it just folds. Folds a couple ways and, and then you just drive off with it and.
Pretty handy with a skill saw.
Well, well, during covid at least, there were plenty of people freezing and eating outdoors. And I've seen people over in Magnolia during the wintertime too, I know I did it, so.
We use them a lot.
Yeah.
I mean, it's the first thing you see as you're driving down the street, like.
It is.
Kind of catches your eye, makes you go, hm, I think I'm going to stop there, have some dinner outside.
Okay, unless we have something else, this is a lot of really good things to take a look at. So I was going to close the new business and move on to planning commission discussion items, my favorite legislative roundup. Yee-haw.
Well, Planning Commission had asked for um any.
We did.
A roundup of any new legislative changes that may affect land use. And it's still a little too early to tell. The only one that looks to probably pass is an ADU change. And. That one will, if, if it, it is passed both ledge, the House and the Senate. And is awaiting signature by the governor and it will require all cities, not cities of certain sizes. To allow two ADUs in all single-family zones. It will also require that all ADU impact fees be. No more than fifty percent of a regular single-family.
That's two per lot?
And you're allowed two per lot. There's all sorts of, you know, like ifs and then's, you know, if you've got a lot under a certain size, then fewer and. So we'll see what the final shakedown is if, or if the governor signs it or does any. Strike-throughs like he did last time, there was an AD ordinance that passed the ledge.
Can I just put three of them on my lot and call one of them my house?
So, you know. There needs to be a primary structure, so you, 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 the, one of them has to be the house. And the, the size limitation's gone up to a thousand feet. So you can't, we won't be able to require ADUs to be less than a thousand feet, square feet. And right now we require them to be no more than eight hundred square feet. There's preemption of parking requirements if you're close to, to transit. And I, I haven't read this thoroughly and because I know it may change. So it's kind of like, I don't want to invest too much time in memorizing and learning this so well if it's going to change. So I apologize if, if I don't have all of the details handy. It's, it's engrossed House Bill thirteen thirty-seven is the one that I'm referring to.
Say again?
Uh thirteen thirty-seven.
Thirteen thirty-seven.
House bill.
That's the one that started with the population requirements, depending on what you can do. There was like twenty-five thousand.
There was, there was multiple ADU ordinances, or not, ledge changes, I should say. So this is the one that passed first. There is still a possibility that a, a separate ADU ordinance may pass. And then I don't know what would happen if they passed two. That would be, they would not necessarily coincide with each other, so then there would be a reconciliation process presumably. So, uh, still waiting on that. Ledge has about a week.
That's it, yeah.
Are they out Sunday or next Sunday? They're out soon and then the governor has some, like a month to sign all of them, so. Still a little early to, to know what's going to, what, what form this is going to look like, but it. In the form that it's at right now, the city of Cedar Rowley will have two years, two or so. We'll have one year, a year and a half from the time that our comprehensive plan update is due. So our comprehensive plan update is due June of twenty twenty-five, so that puts us out till December of twenty-five. That we would have to make any changes, and so we would have to address our impact fees, we'd have to lower them. Right now, we're two-tiered, so the bigger ADUs, you pay sixty percent of an impact fee, so that would have to change. And the smaller ones now pay thirty percent of an impact fee, so that one wouldn't necessarily have to change. We may have to address parking based on what is defined as a transit stop. I don't know if that means bus stop or, or if that just means like the transit hub over, you know, the parking lot over by, by the Walgreens.
I was going to say, that's one I can't even think of.
But if it means bus stop, that gets really complicated because bus stops change. And now that the city has a circulator route, the bus that goes throughout town, I don't know if that means. We would have to look at all of those bus stops every time we issue an ADU permit.
So if you don't, so if you're not required to have parking spaces, sorry, I'm looking at this from, as a, from a landlord's point of view. If you, it's if you don't have any parking spaces and you have ADUs, then you can use the fact that they have a car as a denial of. then you can use the fact that they have a car as a denial of, um, of, you can deny it as a way to deny renting to somebody.
Certain that the legislation does not address that.
The courts will, I assume.
The idea is, you know, the idea is that they're trying to discourage, state's trying to discourage people from having cars.
Yeah.
Because that's the solution to parking and traffic is fewer people and cars. So if you're allowing more density and there's not parking, well, great, you don't have a car. Then you won't have a car because there will be transit available to you.
But how did, how did that work in New York City and Chicago and Kansas City and LA?
People in New York don't have cars. And people in Seattle don't have cars. It's actually, it is actually happening in the bigger cities, but they still have traffic.
Yeah.
Um, and I don't know how that really plays out in a rural city like Seadrile.
Right.
You know, having a bus that circulates here around town is handy. So you can, you know, get to the grocery store downtown or the hospital and doctor's stuff. But you can't, you can't really make it outside of the city. So you still kind of need a car.
Yeah.
Yeah, the one size fits all solutions and that's the biggest criticism of a lot of government entities from federal to state to cities and every, every place is unique, yeah. In Seattle, that could work. In Tacoma, that could work. But in a place like here, I mean, unless you want to run four miles into Burlington and get someplace, good luck. And there's no way to even do it because I see people walking from the Skagit Hotel all the time. And it's about, somebody's going to get killed on that road and they already have. Okay, there's no way to walk from that place. So.
Well, we are building a sidewalk along there.
Good, it, it needs to happen.
Yeah, it, it's already in the works.
That, that's good to hear.
Uh, so that's, that's that one. There's a lot more details on it, but it does look like we'll be addressing ADUs in the next couple of years. The other one that is passing but hasn't made it to, um, to, it hasn't made it to, through both houses yet is, uh, what is this one? Oh, um, allowing us to, um, skip SEPA review for more residential unit types. So like, right now you have to run a, a State Environmental Policy Act notification. That's the SEPA notification for any new developments of four, of more than four units. This, uh, is going to add a requirement or add a, an exception, categorical exemption to the SEPA rules that would allow us to not have to go through that notification process for more residential units. So it makes it easier to build residential units by eliminating that stepped requirement for SEPA. It also has, there's also, uh, passing, and I'm not sure exactly where it is, limited design review for residential construction. Not just single family, but right now there's, we don't do single family. We do a little bit of design review for single family, but for, you know, bigger projects, it's going to limit what you can do.
And in what given example?
Uh, well, first of all, it would have to be administrative, so no more going to like a.
Hearing examiner or anybody else.
Right. So it, it's meant to streamline it, but not entirely handcuff cities from being able to do design review on residential projects. Uh, the missing middle bills are still alive. That one, the, the one that's in most likely, there's a couple of them, but the one that seems to be, the one that's likely to pass does have, uh, exemptions for cities under twenty thousand square feet, or under twenty thousand people. So, um, if it does pass in its current form, it does not appear to have any impact on Seadrile. But there's a couple that I think are still alive. There's, I think there's a, that one and a zombie one that you just never know might come back.
You know, we, we've had this discussion before on ADUs. Just because you put it in code, that doesn't mean it's going to happen. We've had barely anybody coming in for ADU permits because number one, it's expensive. You need to have all your permits and everything else. I mean, how many people came forward when we gave that grace period?
None.
None.
Well, no, I mean, people don't know about it either, right?
Yeah.
Well, we advertised it. We.
Yeah, but you know, people are busy, don't necessarily pay attention.
Or they don't want to pay attention.
And they don't. We've, it's been picking up. I think we had, we've had four in the past year, I'd say, applications.
Four.
Yeah. It's picking up though, and we, we.
Yeah. I, I was only half joking when I said, can you put three on a lot and just have one slightly bigger and call it the main house?
Well, yeah.
Because I'm actually thinking about doing it.
Yeah, you can. Like it would be your main house and then two ADUs.
Yeah.
So that's three in a lot. But one of them has to be called a main house.
Right, yeah. No, one of them has to be the, the main house. The person that lives there all the time has to be, yeah. Who owns the property actually has to.
Oh. Oh, I forgot the big part. The, they've stripped the owner occupancy requirement.
There is none.
So can't require owner occupancy.
So you, so what they're doing, the state is doing is just making it so that people who want to have, uh, who want to have a lot of apartments can have tiny little, uh, tiny home apartments to rent out to people in a, in a neighborhood. So they're getting, going around the multifamily thing completely.
Probably, yeah. So basically you can have a triplex and they don't have to be attached.
Yeah, and you don't have to be in a multifamily housing area to do it.
You're safer if they're not attached. That, that's from a building perspective. That is a concern of mine is, you know, to have a duplex, you have to have, you know, fire separation between the two units. To have an ADU and, uh, attached to a single family home, how is that physically any different than a duplex?
Not.
But yet there's no fire separation requirement. So that's concerning. And I, and it still does not appear to be addressed in the, the legislature because it's something that the building code people are like. It's not a duplex, so how is, how is it not a duplex when you look at it from safety standards? So it just is, um.
So I've got two lots, I can get six, I can get six units on them. That's great.
And you would be addressing, you would be addressing the, uh, the housing crisis in the state's eyes.
Yeah. Yeah, they're idiots, but.
That, that, the intention is to put, the intention is for people to do this. I mean, that's why they're passing these rules.
Oh, I understand.
They want people to be like, oh, well, I can put two units on it. Well, that's a lot different than just putting one unit. One unit's expensive.
Doesn't mean it's smart.
It's less expensive.
I can't even stand my neighbor's dogs, much less having people living in my yard.
Yeah, seriously.
Question, the owner occupancy covenant. So what I get from that, the benefit to that is like you have the owner on site and they are able to kind of oversee.
Right, shotgun on it, yeah.
And so besides that benefit, what other benefit is there to having that?
Well, the theory has always been for the city to decide if you have the owner living on site, that they're, uh, they manage the site better. They make sure that it stays up kept. And when you don't have the owner on site, then, you know, it, then it really is just a duplex with two separate renters living on one property. And renters don't have the same investment in the upkeep and aesthetic improvements on the site. So the idea of the.
Sounds like a code enforcement nightmare.
Uh, it, it could be or just lead to less upkeep of neighborhoods, which then leads to a decline in property values. You've got houses that don't look nice.
Here's an example. I was at an eight unit condominium today up in Bellevue, right next to Western Washington, next to the university. And out of the eight units, only one owner actually lives in that building. Everybody else does not live there. The place is a crap hole. Look, I'm talking basic maintenance.
Is that a technical term?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I can, I can actually give a better definition of it. But anyway, they could care less about mismatching paint, peeling, mold, anything. When an owner is there, they're going to take a lot more care in the structure itself. So that was a thing. But yes, we can define these different things, absolutely.
So.
I want to say I agree with that a hundred percent.
Right down High Street.
Up in West, up in Western Washington University, this, so, you know, the problem there is you're near a university, so the property values aren't going down. And the absentee landlords are packing in tons of kids.
Yep.
Who take up all the parking, who party and, uh, you know, they, and they don't maintain the houses. I had a kid, one of my sons rented a house with, it was supposedly three bedrooms. There were six of them in it.
Yep.
And they had problems with the heater flaming up. I mean.
So you, you go right down High Street. All those buildings are like that. And it's, it's out of control. I mean, it's like Animal House.
It's Billy Frank Jr. Street.
What's that?
Yeah, it is Billy Frank. Do you know there was a house on that.
High Street is still alive and well. Absolutely.
There was a house on that street that was so infused with meth that they had to go in and scrape out all the walls.
I was at eight thirty High Street today, unit number two oh one. And right next door, the kids next door, I mean, I mean beer cans all over, lot furniture. They had lot furniture up on the, up on the roof of the garage. I was just like, wow, check it out.
So that is my legislative roundup for today. I'm sorry, there's just, they're not done. So I don't, don't.
And hopefully they'll never be done, but if they are, we'll deal with it. So.
Yeah.
They don't really need us anymore. The legislature is going to plan it all for us and.
No, they, you're needed more than ever to make sure that, that we're able to craft rules for the city that are, meet the state standards, but are still Seadrile centric. So your, your, your work is becoming more and more challenging as you have more, um, regulations to, to work around.
I see. Okay, that's one way to look at it.
We've done a good job at it though. We've tried the front run, a lot of things that have come out of Olympia in a positive way. And what we've actually put in code is pretty darn close to what's coming out of Olympia.
Yeah, I know. So it scares me.
Well. But we still front run. I don't see any like run on ADUs right now. Like I said, it's expensive. At least there's standards for it. I mean, these are structures people are going to be living in and they're not cheap to do.
I'm just, I'm just in a bet with my daughter that, uh, in twenty years from twenty eighteen, in twenty years, we would be authorizing, um, uh, wood boxes instead of cardboard boxes like they have in Siletto back in the day. But, uh, but that we will be approving that kind of, uh, structure, wooden boxes basically for people to live in.
That's all we had.
Okay. So with that, I would like to make a motion to adjourn. Would anybody like to, take a first?
Second.
Okay. By, do I have a first?
No.
We need a first.
I make a motion.
Okay, you made the first. Second to adjourn. Take a second.
Oh, I'll, I'll second that.
We have a second? Do we have any further comments? None, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned at seven fifty-seven PM. Thank you. John, we're going to miss you.